...will be mural arts.
Thank you.
How many people we have to testify here? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Jane. You can state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Sure. My name is Jane Golden and I'm the Executive Director of the Philadelphia Mural Arts Program.[51.32][51.32][applause] And we would like to start with a video. We thought that would be very lively. I'm sorry there are not more people here, but okay, but we'll go. Are you ready? Here we go.
My life is like a picture. A picture so amazing that you won't even believe what you see when you look at me.
My favorite part about coming here is trying different things, going to different places,
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and thank you to the many people who are here to support the arts.[282.27][282.27][applause] And I want to give a shout out to our Chief Cultural Officer, Kelly Lee, who's here. Thank you, Kelly Lee. I'm excited, I'm always excited, to testify for Mural Arts Class 100 and 200 allocations totaling $1.6 million. The energy and optimism in Philadelphia is tangible right now. Despite considerable challenges, the city seems to be at a pivotal moment of change. The big question that hangs over this moment is, how can we move the needle in a way that is inclusive and equitable? Where one person's struggle is everyone's struggle and one person's victory is everyone's victory. Mural Arts is committed to being part of the movement for positive and equitable change. It's in our DNA, the driving concept from the very beginning. Rather than be punitive with those who have fallen through the cracks, we sought a restorative approach that reinforced their value. We learned that early on when we were the anti-graffiti network, where graffiti writers' destructive impulses were reimagined as creative assets. Art became a lifeline for young people all over the city. That was 32 years ago. The work we're doing now is different, more complex, more expansive, but the principle remains the same. Go to any neighborhood and you'll see our work underway. At Ethan Snyder, Sheryl Alinsky, Southeast by Southeast, the hub is a thriving cultural center and resource center. You can see everything from art workshops to ESL, social services. In this space, the Burmese, Bhutanese, and Nepali refugee communities have built strong intergenerational relationships that led the charge to clean the neighborhood and bring about all kinds of cultural programming. As a result of Southeast by Southeast, residents voiced a greater sense of safety and well-being. In our schools, we are doing more than ever to ensure art and creativity remain a key part of children's education. Through partnerships with Ferrer, McMichael Morton, Roxborough, South Philly High, Esperanza Charter, Mastery Land Fest, we're offering a model that integrates art with core subject learning and provides professional development to our teachers. How exciting it was to walk into South Philly High School recently and see young people excited about algebra as they visually demonstrated math through art. Or at Roxborough High School where they were talking about the universe. Our art education program embodies the principles of project-based learning, challenging our students to think critically, to collaborate, to be problem solvers. We want to give our students a voice and a choice. Our graduation rate in our advanced programs is 100%, and we have a very high rate of students moving on to higher ed. And it shows that our sustained rigorous methodology pays off. Within the seed of each public art project grows the possibility that our young people will be the next generation of thought leaders. I also want to mention our Guild program.[469.21][469.21][applause] Yes. Which puts individuals who are reentering society to work, young people, we work with people coming out of prison, young adults on probation, and we challenge them, ask them, work with them to restore and beautify public and cultural spaces. Since 2009, the program has enrolled more than 600 participants and has been astonishingly successful with a one-year recidivism rate of 18% compared to Pennsylvania's statewide rate of 35% and a national rate of 65%. Art! Those who completed, the Guild described it as supportive but disciplined, where they can get back on their feet and have a positive work environment that gives them a renewed sense of purpose, meaning, and value. Amira Mohabon, one of our graduates, said, "I went from being a number and an inmate to being covered with paint, doing something that I love, and giving back to Philadelphia in a positive way." That's what we like to hear, and more importantly, 70% of our graduates move on to jobs or other programs. And we prioritize working in public spaces, schools, park and recreation centers. These aging community amenities risk sending messages to communities of disinvestment. Public art, benches, other contributions can make a significant difference and signal real momentum. Most of our Guild reentry projects focus on these kinds of spaces so that the participants are maximizing their impact, maximizing their contributions to communities. And the dollars, the dollars that are spent have double impact. It is a win-win. We're transforming individuals and transforming civic spaces. We're also conscious of our aging collection, and we're committed to restoring iconic murals that continue to be important to the community. City support is key to this preservation effort. Our projects help us build trusting relationships with residents that give us insight into pressing community challenges such as trash and dumping, housing insecurity, public safety concerns, health concerns, blight. We use our knowledge to build alliances between people and city agencies and nonprofits that can address the needs of citizens of this city. Often this leads to agencies and nonprofits joining with us in storefront hubs. It's a new initiative at Mural Arts as of a few years ago. Spaces we are proud of in South Philadelphia, West Philadelphia, and now a new one in Taccone, and we hope more to come, hub spaces.[631.04][631.04][applause] Earlier this year, the Yale School of Medicine shared with us the findings for a four-year controlled study. People always say, "Jane Golden, you're so excited, what's the impact?" Well, we have it in describing a statistically significant impact on communities. The Yale team showed us an increase in something called collective efficacy, and I'll tell you what that means. It means that our processes created a window of time when communities are in a better position to help themselves, when substantial change led by those from within become more possible. This is a powerful finding for me because it gives us hard evidence to our belief. It reinforces it that art ignites change. Yes. In the process of creating change, we are contributing to a thriving creative economy by investing nearly $2 million annually in artists' wages. Let's hear it for artists.[686.82][686.82][applause] And we are proud of the fact that we employ artists, employ them, I want to underscore that, and not just provide them with spaces to show their work, which I do think is fantastic as well. And we also are very determined to help them make connections to enrich their careers as they enrich Mural Arts and the city. Artist Michelle Ortiz, who worked with us in this big public art exhibition we had in the fall, said that Mural Arts opened doors to being able to play stories that are often invisible or unheard in public. She said that working with us allowed her to do work she never would have done. "It would have been impossible for me to do," she said. And her extraordinary vision, and perhaps you saw the compass rose with figures in it dealing with issues around immigration and deportation, we were able to help her bring that image to fruition. We want to make artists bring their vision to reality. We want to link them to important social issues in the city because we feel very deeply that artists are change agents. And it's not just local artists, but artists from around the world are beginning to see that something very special is happening in our city. They see that Philadelphia is a place that supports artists. They want to work in close collaboration with us. They see our community leaders, business leaders, and public servants embracing the art. I will never forget Shepard Ferry at a mural dedication with Councilman Squillit, and he said, "I've never seen, I have been to cities all over the world, and I've never seen anything like what is going on here in Philadelphia." And this is what he said, "It's like the artists are in charge." I said, "No, we're not, we're not really in charge." I said, "But we, we are embraced and respected, and that is extraordinary." And so I am so grateful to all of you in the room today for supporting us, for helping artists do their work. You have established Philadelphia as an incubator for creativity and innovation. And speaking of open source this fall, and what an incredible program that was, 14 new commissions, 40 programs, national press. And besides that, we had an extraordinary group of local artists and internationally-known artists. And as if that were not enough, we also did a major commission connected to the Pope's historic visit. 5,000 people from here and all over the world worked on that mural. It made the Guinness Book of World Records. More importantly, the Pope signed it. As this incredible moment in time was broadcast for the world to see, I could not have been prouder as I heard Anderson Cooper on CNN say, "Philadelphia is home to more murals than anywhere in the world." Over and over again.[841.23][841.23][applause] Over and over again, we're hearing from artists and cities about Philly. This is a place where artists want to work and a place where other cities want to learn, and how great is that for us? I want to quote a recent collaborator, internationally-known artist, Caledonia Carey, otherwise known as Swoon. She said, "Working with Mural Arts has given back to me many times more than I was able to give to them, and I tried to give as much as I could. I feel so moved and fed by Mural Arts. Because of it, my life has changed in profound ways." And this is a woman who shows her work at museums all over the world. She joined with us last year to work with participants from a halfway house and people in our Guild program and at Greater for Prison, and she did incredible work about issues related to trauma. She created these beautiful portraits inspired by stories of hope and personal hearing so their stories could take root, fly, and become real. And artists aren't, aren't the only people coming from afar with an interest in our work. Look to our growing tour program, which hosts nearly 15,000 visitors a year. Or consider this statistic, 240 million press impressions that we garnered last year. 240 million press impressions. That is phenomenal. And last fall, an article in Newsweek noted that nonprofits and officials from more than 20 cities have reached out to Mural Arts for advice on starting similar programs. Author Max Kutner wrote that "It is because Mural Arts focuses on community engagement and social justice in engaging in great art." And moving forward, we're doing a lot. Several projects for the DNC, a major public art project in southwest Philly, restoring recreation centers in Germantown in north Philadelphia, working with Kid City Y, working with Connor Barwin and his team at Smith Playground, creating a theatrical production with veterans and people who fled Iraq. We have a big project in the Italian market. We're creating a masterpiece mural about children and trauma, a Richard Allen tribute mural, a masterpiece, and many more projects coming that tie into the goals of Mayor Kenny's administration and the goals and beliefs of city council. Your investment makes this all possible. Your belief in our impact inspires funders to match the city's allocation five to seven times over every year. And it's not just funders in Philly you're leveraging, but foundations and corporations from around the world. It is clear to everyone near and far that Philadelphia is a city on the move. But while we strive to never stand still, our strong arts and culture sector helps to keep us on a steady upward path. We want to thank our friends from the Greater Philadelphia Cultural Alliance, other advocates, and the wonderful arts organizations, museums, and institutions that grace our city. We have amazing colleagues. The power of art to uplift our neighborhoods, galvanize our communities, and bring people together is tangible and true. So as we step into this upcoming year, one I think will be one of our best, I want you all to know how grateful I am to you. I not only thank you, I ask all of you to join us, to work with us in a journey of creativity and discovery. Together, we will use art to engage, to enliven, and to transform our city. Thank you.[1046.15][1046.15][applause] I am very happy to answer questions.
I think you answered everybody's questions. I, I, I'm going to note for the record, I would never ask you to summarize your testimony, but your enthusiasm is contagious.
Thank you.
And, you know, again, for the record, I want to state that I am a huge Mural Arts fan, and, you know, I want to thank you, your staff, and all the artists and volunteers in the communities for what you do. And we do hear your battle cry here for fighting, you know, fighting every day to, you know, for change, the way, you know, people see Philadelphia, the way we see our neighborhoods, and the way we see each other, all right? Because I think that is all part of the programs that you, that you put in place. And I'm proud to, to be working with you hand in hand, and you mentioned smartly in your, in your testimony, Taccone, it's in my district where we have an artist and residence program. We're doing creative things. We're in our parks and recreations. We're in our libraries, and, you know, we're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
So you come in front of city council with your enthusiasm and to let everybody know what Mural Arts does every day and the change that has been taking place in, in our neighborhoods and in our communities with community involvement. There is an ask for additional resources, which, which I support. In addition to what you come with, come here today with an extra $500,000, all right, that if you were to have, can you please describe the additional work that you could do with it?
Yes, um, we could, I think that, I want to start with our reentry work. I think it is, I think that I'm passionate about this because I see real change. I mean, you, our, our Guild members are learning skills and then applying those skills to real city issues, really changing our built environment, changing the quality of life for people. So that's like paying it forward in a very profound way. So with extra funds, that $500,000 will allow us to serve anywhere from 25 to 50 more constituents in restorative justice just in the course of a year. And then we, you know, when you think about it, the, the cost is probably $5,000 per participant, and I know that to be in an institution, it's about $35,000. So it's, it's, it saves society money, period, and it saves people's lives. It, you know, like I said in my, my testimony, it is a win-win. Then I really feel very committed to the issue around preservation. People come to the city from all over the world. If you're the Philadelphia Museum of Art, you're taking care of your collection. Well, we're like an outdoor museum, and we have to care for this collection. I know that when murals start to deteriorate, that people are calling us, communities get together, they want to know what's, what's going to happen. And I'm going to be very proud on Friday to stand in front of the Negro League at Belmont and Parkside and talk not only about the restoration of that iconic mural, but also that we just restored the Jackie Robinson mural. I mean, Jackie Robinson should be there for the world to see, sliding into home. So it will allow us to restore about 25 more murals, that $500,000. And then we have a giant waiting list of people who want work, which is fantastic. We love that.
What neighborhoods? And how many people you think would be affected by?
Oh, literally thousands of people would be affected. And we create an equitable distribution of where the project, we do about 100 projects a year, and I'm happy actually to, uh, we'll go back and we can do some research, and I can disseminate this, maps, to everybody. Actually, in our packets, and we can do this, again, we can show everyone like where we're working, where we plan to be working in this fiscal year coming up, and it's, it's like, we try to work everywhere. We try to be sort of omnipresent if we can. So it will allow us to do a lot more work in communities throughout the city, impacting thousands of people, and also it will impact our restorative justice program profoundly. And we will leverage it. And that's the other thing. We do not take city money for granted. We are like the Energizer bunnies, running, like, I, like, I'm so grateful for every dollar the city gives us, and it's our responsibility to stretch it as far as we can and to leverage it and match it and just really make it work tenfold.
So if, that would, that's $500,000. If you were to have additional $250,000, what would that look like?
We would, we would still do great things. I mean, we preserve a body of work, we would do new work because I, I like feel like, ugh. I mean, we would take that and we would leverage it because I know how many foundations exist, both locally, nationally, who are very intrigued and actually support us because we have funding from the city. Because they think this model, a public-private model, is a sound way of working. And I concur. I think it's a really smart investment. We love, I love that I'm a city employee. 50 people work at Mural Arts, 11 of us are city employees, but we all feel like public servants. So the answer to your question, I, I'm happy to get you specifics on this, yes, I will absolutely get you specifics, but we will increase our work.
Right, no, I mean, that's, that's great. If you, if you have specifics on, on that, on that dollar value, you know, you can provide it to the chair, and we'll make sure that the members get it. As far as the administration plans for rebuild and its, you know, new vision for, or rebuild recreations, parks, recreation centers, and libraries, is Mural Arts included in it?
We, we hope that we are. We aspire to be part of that. We think it's really exciting, and of course, I'm a huge fan of, you know, park and recreation. Catherine Ott Lovell was at one point part of Mural Arts. We look forward to working with her. And we think all over the country, there's a real trend for artists to be involved in big projects, capital projects in, at the front end instead of the back end, and so we would really look forward to being part of that.
And lastly, working closely with you over the last five years, you know, I kind of understand a little of, of the, the back end, you know, with, with your staff and, you know, the pay salaries. When was the last time that the, the staff and some, some of the folks that received stipends had any kind of increase?
Uh, I think it's, is Joan Riley here?
I think it was two years ago. There was a slight increase related to the increase in the co-pay on the health insurance. There was an adjustment made to the city workers' salaries. Last year, we were able to get our lowest wage. Many of our people who work on our crew were making in the $26,000, $27,000 range. We were able to bump that up to the low 30s. But the entire 11 people who are part of the City of Philadelphia Mural Arts Program have not all received wage, wage increase in a couple of years.
In a few years.
In a few years, and we think we're way below market value.
Was there, was there, was there any clause, like a Me Too clause, when, you know, the city municipal contracts or when unrepresented employees received their cost of living increases? Has that ever been a, a history or?
When there's a standard increase across the city, for the city workforce, then yes, we are included in that. But for a while, there was a freeze on wages in the earlier years of the Nutter administration. Then there were some adjustments made, and we did, our staff were-
Adjustment to your health, health and welfare.
Well, it was to their salaries to offset that increase. There's probably someone here from Budget who could describe that better. But I, I want to be really clear on the record, when all the city workforce, if their wages are increased, our 11 city employee, employees are included in that.
Okay, but it's been two years, correct?
It's been a while for the whole staff to get raises. And selfishly, we'd just say, we think our Executive Director, Jane Golden, is the best bargain in the city and is undercompensated for the scale and scope and complexity of her work.
I think the rate of return is pretty good.
But we support, we would say, all our employees, the city, in the city workforce are extraordinarily dedicated, work hard, and their jobs, if you've been in council for a while and you hear Jane's testimony, the complexity of the work and the skillset required to do that work has grown exponentially, and our staff have kept pace with that in terms of their own skill development, their dedication, but we don't think the compensation is in alignment, and we get the complexity of that issue for the city.
Okay, thank you. Chair recognizes Council McGreen.
Thank you, Council McGeehan. I just want to reiterate some of the things you've stated on the record in reference to the Mural Arts Program. They do a phenomenal job of leveraging dollars. I think for every dollar of city dollars that go in, they're able to leverage at least another seven or more dollars from private sources. They've done a phenomenal job. In addition, I reiterate your position in reference to rebuild, considering that the administration's program to use funding from the proposed sugar sweetened beverage tax to make a major investment in our recreation centers, parks, and libraries is one that's, it's fruitful, but the fact that Mural Arts Program has already been doing work in recreation centers for, I believe, the past 10 years, in particular, just this year alone, my understanding that we're doing work at Happy Hollow and Tui and MLK and Whister and also Smith Playground. So they're already doing the work, and they're doing the work in a way that's very meaningful in reference to the Guild. And my question is that for the Guild, you have about 70 people per year participating, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And from my understanding, that traditional recidivism rates are about 34%, but with the program that you're doing with the Guild, what's your recidivism rate?
12%.
About 12%. So clearly, this is a, an organization, a program that's working, is doing a great job in reference to providing people an opportunity coming out of or returning citizens to get involved in meaningful work and providing restorative justice. One other thing I would like to put on the record is that earlier in the year, I had hearings regarding social impact bonds or pay-for-success bonds, and I think the work that Mural Arts Program does is also an outstanding organization to qualify for those type, for that type of funding going forward. So I'll be looking at how we could possibly partner with the Mural Arts Program to maybe bring in some additional resources through social impact bonds, or also known as pay-for-success bonds, but also supporting what Council McGeehan said about additional funding for Mural Arts Program as well as having Mural Arts as part of the rebuild process.
Thank you very much. I'm very, very grateful. And I, and I do think that there's something to it. I think when people are doing work that's tangible, that means something to the community, I, really, it makes a difference, and the feedback is continually positive. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Council Madoff.
Thank you very much, Chairman. As you know, I, I do very much support your program. I appreciate the work. I do think it's quite undervalued, and I do believe that it doesn't get as much credit as it should for the turnaround, you know, that has occurred in this city. I am concerned about the cost of living in our city. I am not in favor of increasing taxes and costs in the city. I think it's, I think it's very problematic for people, but I very much appreciate the creative economy, and I very much appreciate your work, and I would happily fund your program because I think it is so much a, a good return on our investment. Having said that, I do have a question, and that is, when I go through- Having said that, I do have a question, and that is, when I go through Center City, especially during the daytime or some parts in the evening, and I see these beautiful murals, you know, it's, it's very inspiring. I think it's wonderful for our city. But in our neighborhoods, you know, there are also some wonderful murals, but I don't see them lit up at night. And I'm really interested in our evening economy, our nightlife. You know, I did a, a series of hearings around 24-hour Philadelphia and our creative innovative economy. And is it, is there a way to coordinate with PICO and with SEPTA and maybe, as the chairman said, Parks and Rec, so that when you're putting up these murals, we can find ways to light them up in the evening?
I, I actually think that's a fantastic idea. We have actually, thanks to Local 98, we have a few murals that are lit, and when they're lit, they're captivating. We are about to restore the American flag mural, that iconic mural of Delaware and Spring Garden, and our dream is to have that. We would love to come talk to you. And I, I think you're right. I think it's going to take several entities to come together. And see, we feel that with this increase, even a modest increase, though little, few little dollars, it's interesting like how you can leverage it and build partnerships, and I think that that could be possible. I really, like, our vision would be to have murals lit, to have evening tours. We think we could really capitalize on it. I love that idea.
Well, I would love for you to write out, you know, the cost of this and how we can leverage it and coordinate it, and then if there's any additional dollars we need to spend to light up, especially in, you know, some of our challenged neighborhoods where I think this will be very, very helpful in, in uplifting spirits and, and things like that. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman O.
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, Tom. You, Councilwoman Heenan, good morning, or good afternoon, I guess it is. Just a couple of quick questions. First of all, I want to make a statement. I learned a long time ago, nothing great was ever accomplished without enthusiasm. And you've accomplished something great with your enthusiasm and all the artists that are here today. It's a great thing. And as a full disclosure, I own a building that has one of your mural arts on it, as you know. And I'm a big supporter of mural arts. But let me just ask a question. You have this restorative justice program.
Yes.
Which is a great program. How many people are in that program right now?
70 people.
70?
70, or, in, in a year, there's 70 people.
70 people.
Their classes are-
Right. So let me just give you, maybe this is a path to go down for your funding. If those 70 people and the average in the state is 35% of those 70 return, and you said we keep, we are averaging, we're averaging 12%, correct? So the delta is 23% of the 70, which is about, what, 14 or 15 people? We're saving 43,000 times the 15 people. Do the math. It's less than what you're requesting. So this is a program, I'm going to echo what Councilwoman Green said, this is a program that's worthy of funding, especially if you can expand that restorative justice program to more people because the investment we make pays back the return. So if you could, if you could double the amount, it would be phenomenal.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Thanks for coming today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Talton-Bur.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Ms. Golden, in your testimony, you referenced the Energizer Bunny.
Yes.
I believe that you could teach the Energizer Bunny. Something about energy. I have been here for five years as a council staff person. I've been here a couple of months as, as a city councilman. I have never heard such an enthusiastic and passionate testimony in my life. And that is, that is truly a tribute to you. I, I do have one question as it relates to that testimony. What did you have for breakfast this morning?
An apple.
An apple. I'm a big believer in apples. They're, they're, they're very, very good. I think the sentiment from many of my colleagues, particularly Councilwoman O, in helping light some of your great works of art, I think is something we should look at. It certainly would have my support. I think this is a, a great investment, seeing the, the quality of the work done. Your artists are here, your, your supporters are here. I'm very impressed. Also, the video was excellent. If it's possible, I would like a copy of that video. I want to show that to some other folks. I have a question as it relates to a article that was written in, I believe, the Philadelphia Inquirer on, not an article, it was an op-ed on April the 2nd criticizing you, although they liked you, which says a lot about you as well. But on, under investigation that my office has done, I saw that the mural in question of a presidential candidate was not your mural at all. It's my understanding.
That is exactly right. We did not, for the record, do the Bernie Sanders mural. And we thought that was not right of the Inquirer to put that picture next to that letter because that was very misleading, and I did call the Inquirer and say that.
Good, well, that, that's good. But the, the question does raise, I mean, just so we have a greater understanding and can be supportive, what is your procedure in getting a mural up? I mean, what is, you know, what themes do you look at? Who, you know, if you're honoring someone, who do you honor? How, how is that decision made? If you could share that with us.
Right. Well, murals happen five ways. So one is that they come in on the waiting list, and we put together a panel several times a year, and the demand exceeds our ability to do it. So it's competitive. So people are really asked, you've got to make a good case, and there has to be widespread community support. It can't be anything related to an active political situation. I mean, we're a city agency, and we're very, I mean, we would just never do that. I mean, and so that's one way. The second way is projects happen because they're related to bodies of work, art education, criminal justice, behavioral health, community murals. The third way is that the city is grappling with big issues around trauma, around gun violence, and a member of city council or the mayor's office or the mayor will say, "We really think this is an important issue to do." The fourth way is that there is, that funders have ideas too, and that one, we did years ago, a big project on workforce development. But it was a theme that was related to the city. And the fifth way is that artists have ideas.
Sure.
And they are brilliant thinkers. But we always have an internal committee who is vetting our body of work for that. So we could go over with you now, FY17, and say, "Here are some decisions we made. This is why we made them," be able to justify them. And then we're actually, our goal is to be able to do that for the next three years. So there's always a, a vetting process, but community support is really critical to almost, to everything we do, actually. Would you?
Well, I, I appreciate that very detailed answer, and it gives me a much better understanding. And maybe the Inquirer ought to print that, what you just said, on how this is done, so people have an understanding of what you do. Maybe. I mean, I think it would be a natural request. If not, maybe I'll write something with you.
Oh, that would be lovely, yes.
Yeah, because-
That would be great.
People should know the story. Immediately, everyone thought that you did this mural, and of course, it's, it's a highly political season, and people are for and against and everything else, and here is Mr. Sanders in a very big way. And so I think the question was answered very, very well, and I am a big fan of your program as well. I want that to go on record. And Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you very much. I certainly agree with all that has been said regarding mural arts, and everybody loves mural arts, and we're proud that we have 4,000 in our city. I think that we ought to consider doing our 1% art for mural arts. It would help us. It makes a big difference. We could still get art, and I believe that we should investigate that and certainly, again, support all that has been said. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman, or woman. Last question for me, is there, you think there's an opportunity to partner with the Department of Commerce and get mural arts involved in a storefront improvement program? And I think, you know, it will be able to brand commercial quarters with some hand-painted storefronts that will be consistent and in coordination with the, with the program and the commercial quarters.
That is a fantastic idea. I love that idea. Many years ago, when we did the Love Letter Project in West Philadelphia, and we took over an empty storefront, and we started, the artist said, "Let's have a sign painting business." I'm like, "Well, what do we know about sign painting? Nothing." But he's like, "We're artists. We can do it." And people started commissioning us to do signs along the Market Street corridor, and it was fantastic. Fast forward to Southeast by Southeast, or the Neighborhood Time Exchange in West Philadelphia, where there's all this energy percolating. So it's about revitalizing the corridor, and then we can do facade improvement because no one is more creative than artists, and we can also be responsive to the community. So it's like, how do we layer in all these things and be value-added to citizens?
Great. Well, thank you. That seems to be it. So what we are going to do here, the committee whole, will go on recess and take a break and reconvene at 2:30. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]